Good morning. Today is Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is ten a.m. and everyone's here. Good morning. Welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. This meeting is called to order. Commissioner Young, will you deliver the invitation?
Yes.
Everybody please rise.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you for today and all of your many blessings. I pray for your hand of protection over employees and their families as they enjoy the holiday season. Let us always seek your will and do what is right for our citizens. Be with us as we conduct the business of the county. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
And now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approve the amendments of the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting as presented by the county clerk, Connie Beckman. And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from November twenty-second and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Mrs. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents. On our cash report, in general checking account, we have seven million, six hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and eight cents. In tax pool, general, two million, four thousand, two hundred seventy-nine, seventy-one, for totaling cash funds of nine million, six hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Both are approved. And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McWilliams. Item five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor. Mrs. Gore, good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for November the twenty-third are fourteen thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Pre-approved expenditures for November the twenty-ninth through December the second is one million, one hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Pre-approved expenditures for December the seventh, twenty-four thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Expenditures for court today are six hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents. A list of additional bills total three hundred seventy-one thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents for a total expenditures and transfers of two million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Gross payroll for December the first is five hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total transfer of six hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Move the plate of bill.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Gore.
Thank you.
Item six, consider adoption of resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two supporting the amendment to the Act creating the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District as requested by Mr. John Martin, the general manager of Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District. Mr. Martin, is there anything you'd like to say regarding this? I know you sent us an email, and I believe all the commissioners have seen that.
It's pretty straightforward. We're asking for your assistance in amending our mapping legislation. We are currently capped at one cent per thousand gallons of water pumped, and this is only for permit holders. These are commercial entities. It has nothing to do with private wells. That's something that people really need to be aware of. It has nothing to do, will never do with private wells. It will never be charged to them. It's for commercial systems. And at this point, because we are limited to one cent, if we were to lose one of our larger producers, we have no way to recoup that revenue. And we're one of the, if you've seen that, that fact sheet that I gave up, on the second page near the bottom, there's a a list of several of the groundwater conservation districts in the area. Most of them already have exponential, charge exponentially more than we do currently, and they have maximum production fees as high as thirty cents per thousand gallons. We're going to go to the legislature and we're going to ask for ours to be raised to seven cents, and that's not going to be applied anytime soon. It's just to help us as needed in the future, and if we were to lose one of our bigger revenues to, to replace those funds.
So you're asking to raise the cap from one cent to seven cents, so that doesn't mean you're going to seven cents tomorrow?
Correct.
And the one cent, that's been that way ever since y'all were established?
No, actually, we just raised to one cent as of this, this current quarter, as of October one, but for the previous nineteen years, we were at point zero, zero, seven cents, so less than one penny per thousand gallons. We've, we've been real, we've run real lean and been responsible financially. But because we are now maxed out, any, any significant loss, and it's happened before, Tyler, not Tyler County, the city of Beaumont's wells went down from Harvey.
Yes, sir.
And they are our second largest user, which is probably fifteen percent of our, of revenues. We've lived along for three and a half years or so and have, you know, made do with our budget, but we've been walking a real fine line with that.
Now the action we take today.
It's a, after the resolution in support of the request.
In your opinion?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm sorry, buddy. In your opinion, Mr. Martin, if there is any kickback on us doing this, who would it be?
Probably the city of Beaumont. They're the biggest user. We have the second biggest user water supply of Lumberton mud with us here today. He's your representative, and he may add the Atlanta better for his organization.
It, it's not gonna affect us. It's, I mean, we, we're gonna pay the fee, but it's more about making shrink to the groundwater district and their funds to protect our water here.
Like?
If, if the seven cents were immediately applied, pretty simple math, if you use five thousand gallons of water a month and, and your water supply corporation pass that cost along directly, that's seven ti- five times seven cents, so that would be thirty-five cents a month to that particular homeowner. We have some homeowners only use a couple of thousand gallons a month, and some could use a lot more, and those are general numbers because water supply corporations also have to deal with water loss and flushing. They, they do use a, a bit of extra water to do that, so I'm sure the cost would be slightly higher being passed along to the homeowner, but generally speaking, the cost would be very high.
Any other questions?
I move that we pass resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two.
Second. And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the job you do as well, and as well as Mr. Fussell. Thank y'all. Item seven, consider approval of request by, and also Rob Star. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Consider.
Rogers.
Yes, and everybody. Thank y'all. Number seven, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall, precinct two, to rescind the action taken by Commissioners Court on January fourth, two thousand twenty-two, to purchase a two thousand twenty-three Ford F-seven-fifty medium duty dump truck in the amount of ninety-three thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents from Silvey Ford.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to rescind the action taken by Commissioners Court on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Ford F-one-fifty in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three thirty-one fifty-five from Silvey Ford. And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to rescind the action taken by Commissioners Court on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Ford F-two-fifty in the amount of thirty-three thousand, five twenty-eight sixty-five from Silvey Ford. And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, consider approval of request by Commissioner Amanda Young, precinct three, to rescind the action taken by Commissioners Court on December fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one, to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Ford F-two-fifty in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty cents from Silvey Ford. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All of that was done because those trucks were ordered. They were canceled by Ford. They couldn't get them here, and in Commissioner Kirkendall's case, he tried to reorder the dump truck. I think it went up fifteen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand dollars.
And still don't have it.
Still don't have it, so this is to clean up our inventory and to make sure any of these POs that may still be lingering can be canceled and figure out what we're gonna do from there. Item eleven, consider approval of request by Judge McDaniel to pay Texas Advertising Creations invoice number two-five-zero-four in the amount of one thousand, one hundred one dollars for shirts and embroidery for the judge and commissioners.
So moved.
And a motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Is that two? Now both moved.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard you move second. Any discussion? This is for shirts for three commissioners and myself, and any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll have some more shirts for the new commissioner here in about three weeks, hopefully. Item twelve, consider approval of request by Commissioner Alvin Roberts to pay Texas Materials Group Incorporated invoice number two oh one one three seven seven two two in the amount of nineteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents for asphalt for the R and B Ford department. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Commissioner Roberts, hadn't this already been done?
That was, uh, that was part of the, the overlay that was approved back in September.
I guess we could actually take this up on the last item, but I don't understand us having to come back to court to get approval to pay something. We've already I, I might be missing what, what this pertains to. Maybe we should just, uh, take this up on item twenty-five. I'll withdraw my.
All right, anything further? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item thirteen, consider request by Connie Beckman, county clerk, to pay Hart Inter-Civic invoice number zero nine one 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 three in the amount of four thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for ballots for the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two general election.
So moved. Second.
And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall and Commissioner Young to amend the fiscal year twenty-two R and B department budgets and transfer funds as follows, to cover the over-budget amount for these line items. We transfer sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents from the R and B fund balance. We also call that R and B contingency or the rainy day fund, and that amount will go into line item two oh two two dash oh one seven six two two three thirty for fuel and oil, and that's for the R and B two department. And then the same thing for the R and B three department. That amount would be forty-nine thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and twelve cents out of the R and B fund balance to the fuel and oil line item for the two thousand twenty-two budget in the R and B three department.
So moved. Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Just for the record, Judge, this is due to a rapid increase of fuel prices last year.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, wanna make sure everybody saw the printout that we've received from the auditor. It shows a rough estimate of where the R and B fund balance is and the actions that are on court today for this line item, and there's a line item toward the end. If all of those approved, the fund balance would reduce down to around five hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-four thousand. Item fifteen, consider and possibly approve the request by Mr. Jimmy McKim, chairman of the Harden County Historical Commission, to reappoint members for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four term of service for the Harden County Historical Commission pursuant to chapter three, eighteen, Local Government Code. So I have the list of members. These are all reappointments. None of them are new. Is that correct? Mr. Kirkendall, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I think I heard a motion from Commissioner Cooper. Okay, Kirkendall and the second by Cooper, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, accept the filing in the minutes of the court, copy of Texas Department of Criminal Justice Community Justice Assistance Division Financial Management Manual, fiscal year twenty-two statement of financial position in accordance with Local Government Code one forty point zero zero four, and presentation of Texas Department of Criminal Justice Community Justice Assistance Division initial budget by any and as requested by Chief Kevin Cummings of Adult Probation Department. I think this is something he does annually to get it into the minutes, and I don't see him here to say anything about it, so do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Is that right? Good enough? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, consider request by Laura Lyons, law librarian, for county judge to sign correctional facility contract renewal with Thompson Reuters West Publishing Corporation for inmate access to Westlaw. The year of the total will be six thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty cents. This is an increase of three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents over the year. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, consider request by Constable Corey Jeffco to authorize the county judge to execute memorandum of understanding between Harden County Constable's Office Precinct Four and Harden Jefferson ISD regarding three deputy constables serving as school resource officers for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Members of the court, we have a proposed memorandum of understanding that was sent to us by the constable last week, but Mr. Minnick informed me yesterday there's some changes that had been made to that agreement. So I guess what I would ask first, if the constable would come up and tell us what changes are being made between the current agreement that we have. This is a new agreement, it looks like.
Yes, sir.
And then, Mr. Minnick, if you could just chime in on any changes that were made that you, I think, the school's attorney discussed those yesterday.
Yeah, the, this last year, we had one SRO that was governing the last MRO. This one added two extras. Then we had another one that Scott resigned, so I haven't hired three new ones since Scott resigned, went to another, another district. So this, nothing's changed. Actually, the pay went down a little bit because he was at, paid at a higher rate, so we went down to a level, level one deputy for the county, so saving the county a baseball additional money extra. But nothing's changed other than for the new one they did of that, nothing's changed. We actually amended that from what they sent out the first time, so.
Now, I think, uh, Mr. Minnick told me yesterday there were a few changes that, there were some that you, you wanted to make some adjustments to. Can you bring that up?
Yes, so essentially, now let me open it up there.
Yes, sir.
So I spoke to the attorney who represents the school district, and there were some minimum standards that were not put into the original contract that we were currently under, and so she put those in. It's more about what the definition of the SRO does and is allowed to do with the school. So it was mainly that. They did have a concern about, um, there is a car that is supplied by the school district that is allowed to be used by the constable, uh, deputy constable when they are not working at the school. So there was a concern about liability there. That language was removed, so I have no concerns with that at this time. The only other difference really is that the termination language did change. They're asking for a sixty-day termination with, without cause, so for any reason whatsoever, and then to change the with cause language, so they're in violation of the contract to cancel within thirty days. Originally, it was just seven days, and the reason for that is if they do decide to, if we decide that we are no longer interested in getting into this business, they're gonna need time to be able to locate and create a new system that they're gonna have to go through. My intention, or at least this is my plan, and I'm not sure what the Commissioners Court or the county judge is interested in in going forward with this. As HJ is the only school district we do this with, I have set a meeting, and I spoke to the county judge and with constable here, that, uh, next year in June, when the school resource officer is probably not as needed, early on for us to sit down and discuss what the future of what we want our business to be in involves Harden Jefferson ISD. And then if we choose at that point in time, we do not want to continue with the SRO business, we would be able to give them sixty days notice prior to the new school year, giving them about ninety days' time to come up with a solution. And so that's kind of where we are. I kind of think this is a Band-Aid at this point in time until we can decide, kind of summertime. I mean, we certainly don't want to put HJ ISD without any resource for security at this time. This gives us some time, and then come June, we sit down and kind of come up with a plan of what do we see the future of HJ ISD doing, so.
So basically, this goes from one SRO to three. Uh, the school district still pays a hundred percent. The county doesn't pay. We pay upfront, they reimburse the issue. And then the only other change is the termination clause. Everything else is the same.
Direction, and she added some language about specifically what the SRO can and cannot do, which meets the minimum standards for, uh, for these types of contracts.
So you're good with this?
I have no issues with the, as long as the termination language. I, I don't see an issue with them changing it to sixty days, because I totally understand. We're not gonna, I don't see a scenario where we would put HJ ISD out of a security officer or so. I have a feeling we would continue to provide this until they can get whatever they need to set up. So sixty days, I don't have an issue with. It was originally seven, so you are adding some time there, but I think they're gonna, at least me, from my understanding, I'm talking with the constable and talking to the sheriff who's here, that it's gonna be at least ninety days for them to be able to do anything different. So I can't see a scenario where we would just say, sorry, good luck, and then you have no security on your campus for ninety days. I just wouldn't see us doing that, but.
I agree. So just wanna make sure everybody knows the agreement in your packets. There's some changes made, and that'll be given to me to sign later, and I'll send a copy to everybody, and that will be what goes in the minutes. But it's the changes Mr. Minnick just brought up.
I'm surprised that the district has a point with their own police department to do, simply referring back to what you said about the language of what a SRO can do. I mean, if they're an employee of the district as a, as a police officer, they have a lot more things they can do as opposed to what. And also, I would like the, and the judge touched on it, the meet, the, uh, public to know that, uh, we don't have any paid deputy constables. These deputies are being paid by the school district.
Second. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kirkendall?
Will the school district match the pay raises we give? Yes, well, they get their own, they get their own raises as per what they give. We get, they get the school raises.
I think there might have even been one year the school district did not give the deputy constable the same raise.
Okay.
But whatever the school district approves, this is what the county does.
The contract does state that any changes in the pay would need to be discussed by April first.
And that's usually they do that. They give the contract.
And they get certificate pay as well, correct?
They get, that's their own. They, we, we're at their, they can call them their pay raises. They pay that one, but we're trying to get that switched over. They're in the negotiations with that, but this is just a matter of the issue.
So the annual salary for this deputy constable is fifty-five, one seventy-six, is that right? And that's the same thing as an LE one deputy sheriff, is that correct?
That's what I got from the, the.
Sheriff, does that sound right to you?
Sounds close.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'll, uh, you'll sit, give it to Laura. I'll sign it here in a few minutes. Item nineteen, consider and possibly authorize a purchasing agent to solicit qualification statements for two clinical nurse services positions for Harden County Health Services. It's approved upon evaluation committee to make recommendation to Commissioners Court.
So moved.
Hang on just a minute. Let's get the committee names.
Sheriff Whitley, Latasha Jones, and Amber, Amber Meredith.
And now.
So moved.
And motion by Commissioner Roberts, and seconded by Judge McGinnon. Any discussion?
Is this replacement position, or will we add any to the department?
Ms. Whitley, are these new positions, or are you replacing positions?
Uh, we're replacing positions.
Is it renewals?
Well, we're having a hard time keeping nurses, and we had a turnover, so we decided to go contractual.
Oh, okay. But it's not new positions?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty, consider and possibly authorize a purchasing agent to solicit bids for construction-related drainage improvements to the drainage dish behind Parkway Life Church on FM thirty-five thirteen in Lumberton in precinct four, which will be funded utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one, which we all call ARPA, as previously allocated by Commissioners Court for this project.
So moved.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consider request by Missy Sims' purchasing agent to present recommendation from the evaluation committee concerning qualification statements received for engineering services relating to the Texas Department of Agriculture two thousand twenty-two, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Community Development Fund Competitive Application Cycle and Possibly Awarded to Successful Firm. Miss Sims?
Qualification statements were opened on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at two P.M. in the purchasing department. Myself, Stacy Edgar, and Erica Singletary were present. We received four responses. Whitley Oliver Engineering, Sigma Engineering, Arseno Wilson and Cole, and Fitz and Shipman. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Kirkendall, Clay Woodward, and Amanda Holland, and they suggested that maybe we could award, oh, number one and number two. The one that scored the highest was Arseno Wilson and Cole, and Whitley Oliver Engineering was number two.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? I want to thank all the committee members for serving. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-two, consider request by Missy Sims' purchasing agent to present recommendation from the evaluation committee concerning proposals received for grant application and management services related to the Texas Department of Agriculture two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Community Development Fund Competitive Application Cycle and Possibly Awarded to Successful Firm. Ms. Sims?
These proposals were due on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at two P.M. This solicitation was sent to three firms on the TDA's pre-qualified list. We only received one response, and that was from public management. Evaluation committee was Commissioner Kirkendall, Clay Woodward, and Amanda Holland, and they do think public management is qualified.
And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Again, thanks to the committee for serving. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-three, consider request by Missy Sims' purchasing agent to authorize the county judge to sign state and local term rental agreement for Pitney Bowes for Sen Pro P Series posters machine utilizing competitive application, I'm sorry, that's a different line there for a minute. Utilizing buyboard contract number six five six dash twenty-one, a co- a cooperative purchasing agreement. And motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-four, consider approval of request by Commissioner Alvin Roberts to amend the fiscal, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget by transferring thirty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirteen cents from the Roden Bridge Fund Balance to zero one seven six two four three three four, R and B four materials and supplies. This request is concerning the overlay projects on North Canal Lane and Taylor Lane that were awarded during the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Commissioners Court meeting. Commissioner?
Um, yeah, this was in the last budget, and because of stuff beyond anybody's control, there's a couple of things, but, uh, at the time, asphalt wasn't available, so it fell over into budget year two thousand twenty-three, although it was approved in two thousand twenty-two off that budget. And that budget, it was my budget. I had that money in the budget for this. So that is why I want to transfer it over to two thousand twenty-three, and that'll also, uh, keep the new commissioner's budget up instead of taking it out of his budget.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, the item that I had questioned about earlier with the nineteen thousand, which would have been item number twelve. Ms. Gore, is that nineteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, is it included in this thirty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-nine?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so actually, it's two different line items because he's requesting to carry that over, which, that's beside the point. How come we have to get approval in court for something that's already been approved?
Well, when you approved it the first time, you just approved to overlay it. There was no amount discussed. And so now, the reason he had to bring the nineteen thousand to court is because the purchasing policy states anything over ten thousand must have a requisition.
If it hadn't been bidded.
And he did not get a requisition.
It doesn't say anything about requisition.
It doesn't say. Does it say?
It says, it says that we spend anything, which I understand that. I understand that ten thousand. But all these vouchers that were coming back and having approval. But all these vouchers that were coming back and having approval, we've never had to do that before. Uh, and these are items that we go out for competitive bid on. We shouldn't have to come to court and get that approved. I don't understand this.
Well, we were just under the assumption it was over ten thousand, so it had to go to court.
Right, on something that we go out and purchase that doesn't go through the, the bid process, like material. That's the only thing I've had to come in and request.
Yes, sir. In the past, we haven't, if it's been, if the overlay has been approved in court, y'all haven't brought it back to court.
Uh, we checked with the lawyer on this yesterday with TAC, and they said we don't have to come back for approval on something that's already went through the bid process. That, I mean, that's what threw me off about the nineteen thousand. I understand this is a whole separate deal about him asking to carry something over. This is something else, but that nineteen thousand was included. So when we approved it, that amount was not approved specifically before the nineteen thousand, correct? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I'm sorry, what was your question again?
When, when we approved it originally, and last year, whenever it was, the nineteen thousand, we didn't know that amount.
That is correct. We just proved the overlay.
Well, they do an amount per square yard, right? So we don't know exactly how much it is until it's laid down, so.
Well, that's asphalt, though.
This is, this is the material.
This is material, fortunately.
We should have an exact amount on that. I might be wrong, but we should because.
It's hard, it's hard to get the exact amount, though, because you have tie-ins and you have road leveling and, you know, it may take more, a more tonnage or less tonnage. I mean, the exact amount is unknown until you get the bill, bottom line. So you have to be close, and I guess you can be close in that perspective. And that's, that's why in my budget, I had a certain amount that I was looking at for that overlay, which would encompass that. Actually, I had more and had talked to Angela Maddow, but I kept more in my budget for that overlay, for that particular overlay. Just in case it went over and it didn't stay below.
So the purchasing policy as, as it is now, are you saying that if we go out for bids on something and we go over ten thousand, we still have to come back for approval?
No, sir. That's not how we've interpreted it in the past.
So what, what we are doing now is that, because everything that we've come back to court to get approval on, we've already went through the bid process on.
Let me just ask this question. When this invoice got put on the agenda, did y'all not know it was part of that overlay project? Is that why it got put on the agenda?
I don't think we discussed about putting this invoice on the agenda. It just appeared on the agenda.
Well, you know, when it then, at the turn, at the end of last budget going into the next budget, I sat here and told you in court that I had that amount of money going, that needed to go to that deal, and that was the next court. So, and I told her what was going on about it, and I said, that's why that amount's there, and I'm like, that's, that's in my budget. So it was known, it was just, we just got to move that to cover that, that part.
So how, nobody told you to put this invoice on the Commissioner's Court agenda for approval? You just thought it needed to be?
Which one?
Number twelve.
I didn't put it on the agenda.
I didn't put it on the agenda.
I didn't.
I don't know.
I just turned it in. I didn't, I turned it in to be part of it.
I don't know who put it over the agenda, but I can tell you this. We can go back and look. Uh, last couple of times, there've been vouchers come through, this over ten thousand dollars from precinct one, that says request put on agenda by Commissioner Cooper. I ain't never requested put nothing on the agenda. So I don't know who's putting them on there. I mean, that's my point. I'm not talking about him carrying over money or anything else. I'm just talking about, and maybe we should discuss that in the workshop.
Discuss that in the workshop. All right, any other discussion on the request that's been moved and segmented on item twenty-four? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. And the reason I oppose it is I've already discussed with Commissioner Roberts that should have been done in the last budget year. Item twenty-five is a workshop to review and discuss possible amendments to the Harden County purchasing policy and procedures. Mr. Roberts, you had asked to set up this workshop, and again, it kind of, the discussion's already been started, but it has to do with invoices that y'all have to bring to Commissioner's Court because of the increase in materials. And I know that Commissioner Cooper's brought this up to me before, same thing he said a few minutes ago. And that is when y'all go out for bids on limestone and rock and other stuff, concrete, when the, when the bills come in, y'all are going to have to bring that to court if it's over ten thousand, which I understand. My recommendation to you in the past was if you think it might go over ten thousand, just go ahead and do a requisition and do a blanket P O. That way, when those bills come in, they get paid by that P O, but you didn't want to do that. So we're here today to have the workshop to talk about maybe increasing that ten thousand to a, a different figure.
Well, in, in regards to what you just said and brought up, it's just like the other day, I, I got three hundred more tons of limestone. And I did, I, I put in a, a requisition or whatever you want to call it to, to get it. Uh, and at your, you know, when I told you what I was doing, you said you might want to go up higher. I did, I put in seventeen thousand. I'm glad I did, because it came in at sixteen eight. Where we, yeah, once again, you're, you're getting an amount they bring in trucks, and it's not going to be the exact, it's not going, I put in for three hundred tons. I might get two hundred and eighty-nine, I might get three hundred and twenty. And we all know this, it's just, it's the fluctuation of how much they can load in the trucks.
Yes, sir.
Um, if it had gone over seventeen thousand, then we'd be, I'd be having to re-re, redo it and do it all over again, and that would hold up.
Well, that's talking about that. If it would have gone over seventeen thousand, what would have been the process? He would come to you.
I think because he got a requisition to begin with, we could have increased the amount with county judge approval and auditor approval.
As long as it's under what, what certain amount?
Fifty thousand, I suppose.
Do you agree?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's an easy process, I think, but.
I, I wasn't aware that you could, I, I didn't know if we had to bring it back to court and get it re-approved. Um, but, you know, if it, if it's going to be, if, you know, like, going back to what I was saying before, a year ago, we were paying seven thousand dollars for three hundred tons. Now we're paying seventeen thousand dollars for three hundred tons. Granted, that seven thousand dollars was under a purchasing policy that was made in twenty-ten. So the policy's kind of outdated because of the increases in the amounts of costs of everything. So why not bump it up, you know, bring it up to where it, it, we don't have to go through the process, just continue to do what we always did.
Could I say something to that? I'm, I'm good with the policy the way it is, over ten thousand dollars, and I'm against raising it. My question is, stuff that's already been, we have to go through the bid process. We come in here once a year and go through the bid process. So this should take care of anything, fraud or anything like that. Anything else that hasn't went through the bid process, I'm good with this ten thousand dollars, and let's get approval if it goes over. But the ones that I've had come through recently is all material that we've already went through the bid process on. I don't think we should have to come back to court. Now, if, if there is a law that says we do, that's why I'm asking these questions. I need to know that.
And I agree with what you just said. If, if, if we can, if things that have already been bid out, if, if we, you know, we can do that as long as it's in our budget, we know it's in our budget. I mean, we're the keepers of our own budget.
Right.
And we should be able to purchase it. If it's got, if it's already been bid. But anything that hasn't been bid, then yes.
If anything that hasn't been through the bid process, I am good with the way the policy is down. I'm against raising it any higher than ten thousand.
One of the things that I've talked to him about, if I order three hundred tons of limestone base, I can order a hundred and fifty on Monday and tell him to invoice me that on a Monday, and I can order a hundred and fifty on Tuesday and ask him to send me another invoice. So I have two invoices of seven thousand.
But you can't do that.
Well, I was telling him I could.
And, and actually, in our new county magazine, there's a dues and don'ts for purchasing, and that's one of them. You can't circumvent a policy.
If you know you need three hundred, I don't think you can do that.
You can't circumvent the policy.
But if you got, if you went out for bids and you know that three hundred tons is so much per ton, I don't know why you can't figure that out. And you receive a little cushion, like you said a while ago, and just do a requisition. Just tell Misty, I need to order three hundred tons of the widgets or whatever it is that you're ordering, and it's going to be this much a ton. Get me a P O.
I'm good with that, too, Judge, but with Roden Bridge has never had to do that. And if I remember, you correct me if I'm wrong, because I might be, but when we went to this new, uh, the system, whatever y'all use up here.
Well, the purchasing policy is a two thousand and eleven model, I think, is that right? Two thousand and ten, so.
Yeah, but we, we in court, and I think you was on the court at the time, says that everybody has to get a, a P O requisition except Roden Bridge. Am I wrong on that? Because, because of the nature of what we deal with, we didn't have to go through that.
I think as long as it's under ten, you don't. If it's under a thousand, I don't. But if anything over a thousand, I got to get a requisition. Over five thousand, the maintenance supervisor has to get a requisition, and y'all's is ten.
All right, and, and I'm good with that, but do you, uh, do you understand what I'm asking about the bidding stuff?
I do, but you're, you're talking about bidding something on a per ton or per cubic yard or whatever basis. If we get a hard dollar bid on something and we approve it in court, I agree, it does not require requisition, because she can, she can still do a P O when it says approved in court on such and such date. But if we do, if we go out for bids and it's, and, and you're talking about Roden Bridge materials and emotions, that's all on a per gallon or per whatever. And so you're still, if it's going to go over ten thousand, I still think you got to follow the policy and get the requisition.
If that's the case, I.
I'm wrong, and Angela will correct me on that.
That's the way I interpret it, but according to Commissioner Cooper, that's not correct.
If that's the case, I will follow the, the guidelines, and I'll do it every time. But here's the deal. I've done road jobs, uh, and I'm sure the other commissioners has too, where I've been over ten thousand on just about every one of them for material, and this is the first time I've ever seen us have to come back nineteen thousand dollars and get it approved.
I think this was done mistakenly. I don't know, I, I'll take the blame for it. I don't know if I put it on the agenda. It came to our office and it went on the agenda, so I don't know exactly, and I, I just looked, it's just an voucher, so.
So even though.
That's a mistake.
Even though.
It's been approved twice now.
Even though it's not through the bid process on material.
Right.
If we exceed ten thousand dollars on one order, we need to get a P O or we need to come in and get approval. It would go with.
If you're ordering it for stock, I think so, but if it's part of a project, no.
Okay.
If we've approved the overlay, we've never brought those materials back to court.
And I'm going to say that, or sitting there, did I tell you to put it on the agenda, or where did it come from?
Yeah, about.
Okay, so I did it.
All right. So this for stock, that we're just going to have excess material for, we need to abide by the ten thousand. If it's for a project and it goes over, we're good. Correct?
Correct. If the project's been approved previously in court.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, what I'll just say, the inflation is frustrating.
I agree, but let me just say this. I mean, y'all are talking about what you're dealing with. I'm going to pick on the sheriff, I mean, he's dealing with it too. Uh, we brought some invoices in here to pay for some maintenance stuff, and they don't cost the twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars. We get a bill in at six thousand and five dollars. We had to bring it to court because we didn't realize. I just think all of us, including me, have got to just start paying better attention and asking, even though we've gone out for bid, ask, how much is this three hundred tons of whatever we're ordering? Give me an estimate so that I can get a P O. And then it doesn't have to come on the agenda, on purpose or accidentally. Anything else on that?
It's either come to court then and get approval afterwards.
Sometimes, sometimes. Are you, are you saying ask for, ask for, do it and ask for forgiveness? Is that what you're saying? Where did Aaron Tupper go? All right, Aaron Tupper attended a, are we done with the workshop?
Yes.
Aaron attended a. Yep, go ahead.
Take off the business cards?
There were some things that I wanted to look at changing, if we were going to make any changes. First of all, I don't have this in an editable form, so I've started re-taping it. Um, but we, I mean, I can suggest those at a later time and visit with you all and see if that's something you want to do.
No, Misty brought it up to me the other day. Again, this is a two thousand and ten policy, and there's something in there about business cards. Remind me what that is.
It says that we will only provide them for department head only. And there are circumstances where there are investigators or other people in departments that might require a letterhead.
Yeah.
But also, the requisition process is a little outdated in here because we have met data now. Um, there's just a few things that I'd like to clarify and clean up a little bit, if y'all want me to try to do that. And like I said, I can show you what I'm changing and maybe send it out to everybody and.
Since you're typing it, why don't you make those changes and redline them and send them to everybody, and then we'll put it on the agenda when everybody's ready to address it. But I agree with what you're saying, there's some departments, just for instance, the adult probation department gets business cards for every employee, but they pay for them out of grants, so they don't have to follow this policy. But the sheriff can't buy business cards for any of his, uh, upper, upper people. They got to buy them themselves, and he buys them for them out of his pocket sometimes. And so I agree that we, we should look at that. And he's not the only one. I keep picking on him because he's here, but I don't mean to. But I agree that we need to look at some of those things. So if that's okay with court, if you, since you're typing it up anyway, those changes you're talking about making, redline them and let's look at them, and we'll discuss it in a future.
I mean, I like it as long as the department head signs off and requesting it for the people in their department.
That's what we were going to say, is at the discretion of the department head or like elected official.
But going back on the policy, it's a twelve-year old policy, and they used to be amended. There's things in there that should probably show the. It becomes antiquated after a few years. That's changing the policy. Uh, Misty brought us a brand-new policy in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, and had a big fight up here about it, and it kind of went away. So I don't mean a fight, but we didn't agree. So it went away, and we can certainly rehash that whenever, anytime y'all get ready, which is what we're doing right now. We can do it again, when y'all get ready. Anything else on the workshop? All right, uh, thank you, Constable. Uh, forgot that Mr. Tupper had to go get on a theme conference call. He's fighting with them about money right now. So I got to go get on that too here in just a minute. But the weather's supposed to get bad this evening. I make sure Aaron forwards that information out to everybody. Uh, he was going to get the latest and greatest and provide it to us, but we waited, I talked to him, so. Any other discussion items on item number twenty-six? If not, I'll go to twenty-seven.
Let me adjourn.
Second. That motion back to Mr. Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. We are adjourned. Y'all have a great week and a safe evening. Yeah, I just need that page, I didn't get it. And a Merry Christmas.